Making decisions that will guide and move our city forward. God, I say thank you for the people that are here today. Thank you for the troubles that they bring you. Thank you for the worries that they bring you, not because they're suffering with it, but because there's an answer for it. God, I'm asking tonight that you would allow your, your spirit to flow in this place, even in decision making. And as we come to grips with the decision, Lord, let everything be done well. Let everything be done for the glorifying of not just kingdom work, but Heavenly Father, to build this city to become even greater than it already is. And God, we will give you praise. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the individual republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. Thank you for your participation in the pledge. All right, need approval for the January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five work session minutes? Need motion?
Motion approved.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Need a motion for the approval of the January twenty eighth regular, regular council meeting, twenty twenty five? Need motion?
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
All right, need approval for the January thirty first, twenty twenty five recessed regular council meeting? Need motion?
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
All right. Mayor Ree.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see everybody here. Good to see y'all in public come out. We want to thank you participating in local government for all you do in the city. We know there are a lot of things happening, just kind of checking out the work session. Know there are a lot of questions about various things, but just know that we're trying to work with the council to move the city forward as quickly and legally as possible. With that said, I want to begin tonight's message by drawing attention to an alarming statistic from last year. On a press conference this morning, Police Chief Jim Grayboys shared a staggering statistic with us that Montgomery Police Department seized nearly one thousand nine hundred firearms in twenty twenty four. That's a significant challenge faced by our law enforcement officers every day. Furthermore, the rise of illegal gun conversion devices or Glock switches and bump stocks, another firearm modification device, has increased the threat of violence in our community even more. As the legislative session opens today, lawmakers on both sides of the aisle have proposed solutions to address these issues. HB twenty six, SB thirty one, and SB thirty two would ban machine gun conversion devices and impose stronger penalties for their use. HB twelve and HB fifty one would ban those bump stocks. They are reasonable steps that respect the rights of responsible gun owners while prioritizing the safety of our city and our state. I don't see this as a political or partisan issue, but more a public safety and public health issue that we must address. We're doing our part. We ask leaders at the state to help us by doing theirs. We all want a safer community and a safer state. The time to act right now is now, and I hope that if we get the opportunity to discuss these issues down with the legislature, we'll have members of this body, city councils, as well as myself, and Montgomery Police Department advocating for why these changes are needed. Now shifting gears, I want to highlight a recent project that was just announced. Diageo, a global leader in beverage alcohol and alcohol beverages, has committed four hundred and twelve million dollars in capital investments to establish its new distribution plant in Montgomery. The three hundred and sixty thousand square foot facility will create more than one hundred full-time, high-quality jobs and approximately, approximately seven hundred and fifty jobs during the construction phase. Diageo's investment reinforces the crucial part of our region, plays in logistics, manufacturing, and supply chain infrastructure within the southeast. We are proud to work alongside Diageo, the Chamber, the County, and other partners to ensure the success of this facility. Montgomery has demonstrated a propensity for attracting world-class beverage manufacturers in other key industries as evidenced by this investment. After attracting one point one billion dollars in capital investments in twenty twenty four, Montgomery continues to shine as a premier destination for businesses of all sizes, and we look forward to continued innovation and growth as we push further into twenty twenty five. Speaking of business, I want to make sure everyone is aware of the recent change in the deadline for business license renewals. The city of Montgomery has extended the deadline for renewals until February twenty first without penalty. It is important to know while the renewal process has been extended this year, all tax accounts must be current with the city of Montgomery and paid in full before renewal will be issued. We appreciate your patience as our city staff works diligently to ensure that all business licenses get renewed ahead of the new deadline of February twenty first. Please share that, and we'll make sure we want to try to get that out as far and wide as we can. Now, as the calendar shifts to February, we want to draw attention to the month of February, which marks Black History Month. In Montgomery, Alabama, a city central to the civil rights movement, it's fitting that today is the birthday of Mrs. Rosa Parks. Her courage and her commitment against segregation in nineteen fifty five sparked the Montgomery bus boycott, igniting a nationwide fight for justice. In her words, "To bring about change, we must not be afraid to take the first step. We will fail when we fail to try." We will fail when we fail to try. I want to say that again because we have to try regardless of what we think the outcomes may be when it comes to a lot of challenges we see not only in our city, our community, our state, and our nation. And so in keeping with that, just a quote I think we ought to keep in mind. But that spirit will be celebrated throughout this month, from our libraries, our museums, to other events that many, many organizations are leading and organizing. We ask all, we ask all of Montgomery, all of Montgomery, to take part in this and join us in commemorating Black History. Black History isn't just for black people. Black History is for everyone. It's American history. We had a group from the Council General's Office of Great Britain today. They told us that in ninth and tenth grades in Great Britain, they learned about Montgomery and the bus boycott. That's significant when you consider the global impact that so many people had here before they were mayors, before they were city councilmen, didn't really have a lot of titles outside of maybe the church or maybe outside of the school and the community, what they were able to do. And to hear the council general from the United Kingdom talk about what they learned and how much they learned about civil rights history in ninth and tenth grades is very, very important. It even really put things in more perspective for me. We get a chance to visit with so many people from around the world, but I didn't realize that. So we want everybody to come out and participate and learn a little bit, participate, ask questions, enjoy, have a good time, eat a lot of good food, hear some good music, have some great conversations. It's not all heavy and serious, but it is a way just to share things that may not have been highlighted in our history the way that we ought to highlight it, certainly right here in Montgomery. With that said, in the spirit of Black History Month, I would also like to announce the city of Montgomery has received a seventy five thousand dollar grant from the National Park Service to carry out some important work. The funding will be used to conduct surveys and research to help the Mobile Heights and Carver Park neighborhoods earn nominations for the National Register of Historic Places. Post-World War II segregated residential communities, they are adjacent to the Seminole Montgomery National Historic Trail and were associated with the Federal Housing Administration's segregated housing and the civil rights movement. Created by Congress in twenty fourteen, the Underrepresented Communities Grant Program has provided eight point two five million dollars to state and tribal historic preservation offices, certified local governments, and nonprofit organizations to expand the National Register of Historic Places through surveys and nominations. That must be in your district?
Yes, yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir.
All right. Shifting gears, I would like to extend an invitation to all of you for the swearing-in ceremony for new Montgomery Police Chief Jim James, Jim Grayboys, at City Hall tomorrow, February fifth at ten a.m. Chief Grayboys has demonstrated outstanding leadership at the top of Montgomery Police Department and is dedicated to the safety and well-being of every resident of Montgomery. The role of police chief is not just about enforcing the laws, but about building relationships and fostering a sense of unity, safety, trust, and transparency across our great city. We stand together as a community to support Chief Grayboys, and we hope that you'll be able to join us at tomorrow's event, whether it be in person or virtually, as we look toward a bright future for his leadership as well as that of the Montgomery Police Department. Now closing out my message this evening, I would like to introduce representatives from Live Free. They join us tonight from a national organization dedicated to ending gun violence and the mass incarceration and criminalization of our communities. They have built a network of thousands of faith leaders, directly impacted leaders, and movement partners working to bring peace and healing to our nation's cities. As part of a public health approach, Live Free continues to advocate for community-led solutions in addressing the systems perpetuating this crisis. I'd like everyone in this room to ask themselves just one question from your position as part of our community. What can you do to join us in ending gun violence? Welcome, members of Live Free organization. I'd now like to invite them up to share a brief word of the work they have done and will do as partners in our Community Violence Intervention Program. Thank you all so much for being here. Really appreciate your work, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. We really appreciate the partnership of the city of Montgomery. It's good to see some familiar faces. We were here. Marcus and I last year did a presentation in this room. We just have a couple of minutes this evening, but tomorrow we're going to do a larger community forum, which everyone is invited to, to learn more about the strategy and the intervention. So my name is Dr. Antonio Cediel. I'm with Live Free USA, as the mayor indicated. This is my colleague Reverend Marcus McAllister. We both do violence intervention training and technical assistance in cities all over the country. We both also are with the University of Chicago Crime Lab. We helped design Community Violence Intervention Leadership Academy. I serve as instructor, and Marcus serves as the dean of students over there. Just to give you a quick update since we saw you last time, so right now, as the mayor said, this is an approach, Community Violence Intervention, which is based on a public health lens for reducing violence in cities. And so we're pleased to partner with the Family Guidance Center, which has been contracted to be the organization over the main part of the strategy. Baptist Health is also at the table partnering with us as well. Right now, we're in stages of hiring and getting ready to train the key staff that's going to be implementing the strategy. So we're really excited. We started our first interviews today. We'll be interviewing tomorrow as well. We'll be interviewing over the next couple of months, really paying attention to get the right people for this work. It takes very unique skill sets to do this well. And then as soon as possible, we'll begin the training of the, of the staff and the teams as well. Marcus is going to be the lead trainer on this project, and we're hoping to launch this around May. So I'll turn it over to Marcus to talk a little bit about the training.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Glad to be here. Thanks for having me, to all the council members and the mayor. So one of my jobs would be to do the training, and some of the things that we train on is some conflict mediation, de-escalation, engaging high-risk individuals, CVI one-on-one. Want everybody to understand what CVI is. Professionalism when doing the work, I mean, we're trying to hire individuals that are from a particular community. We would like to get people that's from the area we're servicing. They have to be from that area. And the only thing I would say too about the process, like today we're going over to managers, and we'll get to the point where we're getting what we call frontline staff that are kind of like the frontline, but that's, that's something that I know we're at a critical point of time, but I don't want to rush and get the wrong people either. It's not nothing you just grab anybody. It has to be the right individuals that are, that are dedicated to the work, that have those relationships, that can understand and lead with empathy. So I'm looking forward to doing those hiring panels. We also train on trauma-informed care, dealing with grief, working with program participant, what does that look like, storing data, role plays, inputting data, and letting the data inform the work. Lastly, I'll say, and as he mentioned, I'm a pastor. I always like to give a little testimony, and I would just say like this, that it's humbling to be here in Montgomery. I'm excited to work with you all. I'll say this very humbly, no one in the country, so if you just want to Google, I'm not even just saying Live Free, Google me. No one in the country, in this whole country, has trained and lifted up more CVI sites than myself, and that's just, I just give God the glory for that, but no one's done more work in this country than me across the board when it comes to CVI. And I look forward to doing the work here and working large, right alongside of everyone to get this thing done correctly. So thank you for having us, and we definitely open to any questions you may have.
All right, council, have any questions?
Mr. President.
Ms. Johnson.
You said something which I've stated many times, is you want to hire the right person. So I would love to know how your panel is set up to know, because you're not from here. So how do you know who the right person is and they're not just building up this resume? Because there's plenty of people that say they do the work, but they are not from the areas, and they are not reaching who they need to reach. I don't know how long you've been in here, but it's community members talking, fire department talking about the issues that they're going through in different communities, where like you would know someone from the west side of town can go over to the north side of town. So how do you know? And how can you, what tools are you using to know these are the people that's right for this area?
Sure, I'll say a quick answer, a piece that I would like to say. So obviously, we wouldn't dare be on the panel. We're not from here. We're on the panel, but with the support of like people like Roe, and earlier today, Eddie was on, and you know, and hopefully we get this program manager hired first because the actual program manager, you know, they're from here, we want them on there. So we use a variety of people that are from Montgomery. One thing, I don't have to be here to know this. I know when somebody, I didn't do the work for a long time. I, I've come out of a situation, I live, lived experience. I know when somebody's serious and intent and about the work, might not know where they live at, but I can tell when somebody's faking or not. I've done so many panels when it comes to finding street interventionists, because I was a street interventionist, so I'm going to speak their language, I'm going to ask them the questions and see how they answer them. And I don't necessarily have to be from the city to know if they're trying to pull my leg. I just can see right through that type of stuff. But with the help of people like Roe and those that are from here, we plan to do it in conjunction.
Yeah, so on the interview panel, we have folks from Family Guidance Center, from Baptist Health, from the city, and from the county, like you said, including Roe from the Office for Violence Prevention. So we're here to provide our insights in terms of the, the type of characteristics we're looking for, but we count on local folks to know who actually has credibility in, in the city as well.
And, and we do our own background checks, like I, I mean, I do know people here in Montgomery. Hell, I know some people here that was incarcerated with people of mine, so we start doing background.
That's what I'm trying to see now. There can't be nobody with a bachelor's degree and master's degree trying to tell you who from the street.
No, they're not the people we're looking for. You know what I'm saying? That's not, we're looking for rough around the edges, but when they get done, they'll be smooth in doing this work.
Okay, and my next question is, so the training, how long is that training process?
Excellent, correct. So we start off with forty hours of street intervention training, all things outreach, et cetera. Then we do another forty hours of management training, and then we'll do several boosters. So we're not just training and leaving. We'll come back several times to see how they implemented that training. We'll set up a regular weekly call. There'll be a variety of things that, that takes place over that year, but normally it's forty hour training each time we do those, those long trainings.
Okay, and, and my last, Mr. President, I hope it's my last, because you do have something going on tomorrow. So we, you say a street interventionist. So these aren't nobody that's sitting behind a desk filing paperwork and telling, and putting together ezets. We talking about people that are beating the streets in the neighborhoods, knocking doors, talking to real people, something that they would hope that we do that, but we can't do that. But you know, with somebody that's out there that's truly doing it, so then there's issues that's happening in the streets that it'll help the police department, it'll help crime stoppers, and it'll also help us when we're doing legislation across the board and even going and advocating at the State House, but the, I just.
Credible messengers. These are individuals that have credibility, that can see things before that little small fire becomes a forest fire, before that thing called disrespect turns into multiple people being shot and killed. So we're trying to get credible individuals, and, and it looks, if they've been through something, that's a plus sometimes, because I went through something, and here I am today. I did ten years. I want to put, I'll put it out there, because I've been to ten years, but I've been to the White House five times, and I'm also did some stuff with the Department of Justice. So I know people can turn around, so it's not, I don't give up on nobody, but we want to get the people that are from these neighborhoods that might be on the verge of like, they're just looking for something, they need an opportunity. This work will definitely get them straight.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. President, I have a question. I'm going, I'm going to correct something, Ms. Johnson. We do have people that have education that was out on the street and came back and made theyself a productive citizen, and they are able to do this work, that know the understanding of this job as well. So I want to put that out there, because you have people that have been incarcerated, came out, made a, a good life for themselves, and have an input that can show you, you can do better in this world for the little effort that happened in their past, because you just sit here and you just spoke, you're the, you're a prime example. So that's why I want you to know, we can also use those who don't mind educating themselves and who have been on the street, not just all the ones that have been on this street. So I want us to understand this is an overall working environment that we have to done to work together. So I understand exactly what you're talking about, because we can do this together, but we got to make sure we collaborate everybody, not just certain people, all people, because it takes all of us to take Montgomery back and do what we need to do.
Mr. President, I, I just have one issue. Montgomery cannot wait another three months. I want to know, why is it taking us so long to get them on the street where we need them? Why is it taking us so long? We, we're losing our, our people, I mean, almost every day. I can't wait or tell my folks, just give me three more months. Why is it taking us so long to have this program implemented if the, if the, if it's already laid out? Why is it taking us so long? That's the only thing I want to know. School is about to be out in May, summer is hitting ju, and that's when the most activity take place in the neighborhoods that I represent. Why are we taking so long to get this program out in the street, in the communities, in the neighborhoods that we see everybody up here ran on public safety? And we're not, we're not by any means replacing policing, but we want to know what's taken so long to get this program up and running?
I'll leave the details of that to, to, Mr. Comptu back here, he can give some of the answers for it. What we can say from our perspective is, as soon as Family Guidance Center is on board, now that they're on board, we can begin. And so that's what we've been waiting for, for, because it requires a community-based organization here to start the work. So now we're ready to go. So in terms of the time between before and now?
So yeah, as you know, our Office of Violence Prevention Director is no longer with us as of October of last year, and that's when I was asked to take over. When I took over, I found that the award that was actually awarded was awarded to the wrong person, so I had to fix that award first. Then I had to go in and do contracts for both Family Guidance and Crime Stoppers. And then Live Free's contract was, it was, it was over, so we had to renew their contract as well. So between October and December, when the mayor made the announcement, we actually got all of that done, and we are where we are today.
So I'm not talking about, I'm talking about.
From now.
From now to, to, you're talking about May. You're talking about almost, that's what I'm saying. I'm talking about, you know, if we started in February, we, we talking about May, then May, May pushed into June. I'm talking about why are we not on the ground? Family Guidance is in place now. You free, we, why are we not on the ground running right now? Why interviews are not tomorrow? Why interviews are not the day after? Why are we waiting into May to do something that this city is crying for? I'm not, whatever happened before February the first, when you guys actually got the contracts, I'm worried about what happened today when you standing in front of us, you saying May now.
Yeah, yeah, so, so a couple of things. So he's, we said May, and I like to say May could be sooner, but here's the thing, let me just say this, with all respect, we, when you, when you're trying to get violence stopped, you want to do it right. I'm telling you what I know, you do not rush just picking anybody out there. We, like she said, we got to find the people, we just got the contract, we did interviews today, we're doing them tomorrow, we're going to set up some more interview, we're not waiting for us to be here, we can do them virtually. But getting those individuals is not something you just, man, I'm telling, you know, just throw, I, I gave them a story, I worked with the state's attorney's office in Illinois, and we, we put together a project, and he asked me to, and like anybody, you want this thing going, I get it, bodies are dying, but I want it to be right so we can, so that, so those numbers can go down. The worst thing we could do is hire the wrong people. They get hurt, they mess up the program even more, and we ain't made no dent in the numbers. If you get, if you work with us, just on a little patience, and I know your constituents are out there, but we have to do it right. And hopefully starting today, tomorrow, and going forward, we'll start to get the right people, we'll start to hire them. It may be before May, but May's a good indicator. I mean, when you think about just giving it total launch, you know, like, that doesn't mean things are not going to start before May. If we get a program manager hired this week, then he got things, or he or she got things that they're going to be doing over the next week or so, because we want them to be a part of the process, because we needed a, a manager in place. So I'm not locked in and saying that it can't happen before May. I think May was just a good spot to say, hey, by the, the whole totality of this thing, because it, it happens in phases. I'm not even looking to hire, let's say we got twelve people we want to hire, Mr. Mitchell, it, it would be, why would we hire all twelve when we can get seven on the street right now, and they can be out there, and then, and they also can, that will draw other attention to say, hey, I want to, I like what y'all are doing, how can I get involved in that? Instead of just like putting everybody, like the hiring process should be kind of a stagnant thing, but at least get some people on the, on the streets doing the work now, and then add the rest as we go. I know we under pressure, this ain't my first rodeo when it comes to violent stuff happening, but this work is, you don't rush getting the right team to do this work, I promise you. If not, we, we'll just be rushing and just telling you anything, say, oh, yeah, sure, come on, let's hire them, let's do them. They want people out there. That don't do, that, that's not the way to go about it.
And I just want you to explain it, because I want you to, to, because a lot of people was asking that, and may have been scared to ask you, but I want to verbally hear you say why it's taking so long. So I can go back and explain to any of my, my, my council counterparts that may ask, or even the people in the residence, but I want you to verbally say why it was taking so long on this process. Thank you, sir.
I appreciate the question, sir.
Mr. President, I, I do.
Ms. Johnson.
I, I just want to harp a little bit on the May, and I'm glad that you said that seven can go out and not, because school is out in May, and I, I know you know our numbers, and, and Nancy, you got spring break, yeah? So you, you talking ages thirteen to eighteen years old that are committing most of the crimes right here in our city. And, and Eddie, I just have a question for you. I don't see crime stoppers here today. I don't know if Tony maybe couldn't make it, but is he on this panel, and how engaged are they? Because no disrespect, I love Family Guidance, but they don't do this work.
No, great question. So this is just one part of the mayor's Together We Rise Plan. This is the Community Violence Intervention Program. Keep in mind, we also have the faith-based community, it's love thy, love thy neighbor as thyself, and then we have Crime Stoppers, which is, I forget their, their title or slogan or whatever, but they've also met with their organizations, and you all will be receiving a report from that probably this week. They met on the thirtieth.
All right. Thank you, guys. Any other question? Thank you. Mayor, you done? That was.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, any special committee to report? No special committees to report? All right, item number one and two.
Mr. President, you have a consent agenda before you items one and two for council approval.
All right, need a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Had some stragglers.
All right.
Item three, Fremont Review of Denisee Bell, joint business is A.B. Joseph, thirty-eight thirty-six Harrison Road.
Ms. Bell?
Ms. Shabel? Okay, Mr. Semenka?
Uh, Ms. Blalock, I, it's not important that necessarily that she's here tonight, we were gonna talk a little bit about some of the calls that we've gotten over there. Uh, I was appreciative, M.P.D., they actually went over to take a look at an event that, um, happened over there over the weekend, but there's nothing else more, so we can close this one. I'll reach out to her directly.
But no more action?
No.
Item four, application for an alternative transportation service doing business as San John Medical Transport Service, nine South Park Street.
All right, Ms. Mary Shine? Ms. Ralston?
Um-
Your name for the record, ma'am, I apologize.
Mary Shine.
All right, yeah. Ms. Ralston?
Um, yes, sir, Ms. Calhoun, Ms. uh, Shine, go ahead and explain, um, what you're planning on doing, and explain in detail what's going on.
Um, my plans are starting, um, a business, um, as far as transportation, the elderly, um, more so targeting the elderly and the disabled, that's not able to drive due to medical reasons.
Okay.
So, non-emergency transportation?
Sir.
Non-emergency transportation?
No, sir.
Yes, sir. Non-emergency, right.
Non-emerg-, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Um, I spoke with Ms. Shine, she explained to me that she's only gonna use her personal vehicle that would be parked in her driveway. She would not be purchasing no van or no truck or anything to transport anybody. She'll be, uh, she's just gonna take them to the doctor's, uh, appointments and stuff like that, so I don't have a problem with that.
All right, need a motion?
Need a motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand?
In unanimous.
Good luck with your business.
Thank you.
Resolution is adopted. Item five, resolution approving municipal judge Angela Star.
Amendment. All right, uh, item number five, need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand?
In unanimous.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand?
In unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Madam Clerk, could we take those two that you passed out, so I won't forget, or you have them at the back of your, the two?
You want to do them now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The first one is an ordinance amended section dash one oh five, of the license specifications, general notice.
Okay, need a motion to suspend the rules from the council?
Motion to suspend the rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand?
In unanimous.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand?
In unanimous, ordinance is adopted. Resolution approving and authorizing mayor to execute in agreement with three squared technology group, one hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-six cents for security plans, procedures, assessments, et cetera.
Motion to suspend the rules?
All in favor, please raise your hand?
In unanimous.
Motion to adopt?
All in favor, please raise your hand?
In unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item six, application for special retail within thirty days of your license doing business as Just Cause of Ed Center, thirty-four forty-seven McKee Road.
All right, uh, on us for, uh, item number six, please come forward. Yes, ma'am, your name for the record?
Yes, sir, Ayesha Day.
Okay, so you-
That's my business name.
Okay.
Gang Day.
All right, this is a public hearing, anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward. Send an undeclared public hearing, it's been held in progress for the council, need a motion?
Motion to suspend rules?
All in favor, please raise your hand?
In unanimous.
Motion to adopt?
All in favor, please raise your hand?
In unanimous, resolution is adopted.
All right, good luck with the business, hope.
Thank you.
Item seven, application for restaurant retention of license doing business as Yellow Hammer, eighty, seventy-seven twenty-five, April five.
All right. Yes, sir, come on up, your name for the record? Your name?
My name is Flayla Koma-Tel.
You get it, Ms. Blalock?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. All right, this is a public hearing, anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward. Send an undeclared public hearing, need a motion, Mr. Pruitt?
Move to suspend rules?
All in favor, please raise your hand?
In unanimous.
Move to adopt?
All in favor, please raise your hand?
In unanimous, resolution is adopted.
All right, good luck with your business.
Good luck.
Item eight, application for an alternative transportation service doing business as an on-time transportation, eight forty-seven North University Drive, Suite B.
All right. Your name for the record, sir?
Dennis Westman.
Okay.
Hi, uh, I'm going to let, uh, one of our examiners, Ms. Harris, speak, she has been dealing a fun time.
Okay. Ms. Harris?
Um, yes, I wanted to, um, to bring him forth before council today.
Okay.
Um, we do have some issues that we have to resolve today, uh, before granting him his license.
Okay. Uh, Mr. uh, Westman, you familiar with what she's talking about, about the issues you need to take care of before your license date?
Not necessarily, except for, I know I had to come through that, because I, um, I, I don't know.
All right, so what else do we, uh, hold this up?
I know some of the details, but not, uh-
You guys want, you guys want to meet, and I'll bring it back up? Uh, is something that could be rectified today?
Yes, something that's, that needs to be rectified today.
All right, Mr. Westman, you will just meet with them, and then we'll bring it back up at the end of the agenda, so we can figure out what's going on.
Item nine, Suresh Khoshik, the reconsideration of signage, signage at one thousand nine West South Boulevard.
All right. Okay. Yeah, go ahead, your name for the record, sir?
Yes, sir, I'm Clay Phillips with Phillips Law Firm, I represent, uh, Mr. Suresh Khoshik and Alisal Co- Corporation.
Okay, what, what's the issue?
Well, we, we, we have an agreement, uh, what we had is we, um, the, I guess the council voted to, to have Mr. uh, Khoshik's sign torn down at the corner of the bypass in the interstate. We filed suit in circuit court, Judge Griffin said, hey, y'all need to work this out, so I got with the, uh, defense attorney for the city, and we worked out an agreement where we would, um, you know, and I don't know if y'all, I assume y'all saw the plan, uh, for the sign, and that we would, uh, Mr. Kibby Tate would approve this plan, and I understand, um, Mrs. Riley wants it done more quickly, and so we agreed we'll do it in three months, um-
Okay, Kibby Tate?
Uh, good, good, good evening, everybody. We've, uh, been, uh, dealing with this sign situation for some time, as, as the lawyer said, we've been to Judge Griffin's court, he actually called me from the courtroom to, uh, discuss this, and we have seen what Mr. Khoshik has proposed, and we don't have an issue with it, provided that they pro-, uh, put in place the design that they have within, um, uh, uh, three months.
Okay. All right, we-
Made it, made it.
Do we need to take action on this, Ms. Blalock? Because I mean-
I would assume you did, because the council authorized-
Okay.
The destruction of the sign.
All right, so we gonna grant what Mr. uh, Tate was talking about, ninety days, three months, to go ahead and get the sign and record it up, and, and run it, that's okay with you, ma'am clerk? So, I need a motion to, uh, suspend the rules?
You don't really need to suspend the rules, just make a motion to approve-
Okay.
The ninety days.
All right.
We make a motion to approve the ninety days?
All right, all in favor, please raise your hand?
In unanimous.
All right, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item ten, appeal by Ed Fleming regarding sign at thirty-five thirty Atlanta Highway.
Yes, sir.
Ed Fleming with Hodges Commercial Real Estate, I represent a client that's opening a daycare center at thirty-five thirty Atlanta Highway. She's gotten her lease, uh, she's gotten her city business license, she has not been able to get her sign put up on the frame that's out there just yet, waiting on DHR to get that implemented, and then she'll put a sign on there as part of her program.
All right, so I think we, we want the same thing, ninety days?
No, it was thirty days, Ed, can you, how, how long is it gonna take to get signed up?
As soon as we can with DHR, because it's fairly, not expensive, expensive, but for her just starting her business, it's an absolute expense.
So, so we spoke about this item in the work session, and we just wanted to put some bookends on this, to make sure that these programs continue like we would desire, and, uh, what we talked about in the work session was thirty days.
Thirty days?
Can y'all make that work?
Thirty days, or we'll come back and see if we have a problem, yes.
All right.
Okay, that's good.
That's good?
All right, need a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt?
All in favor, please raise your hand?
In unanimous.
All right, good luck with your sign, Mr. Please.
Thank y'all very much.
Item eleven, pursuant to section eleven, pick three V one code of Alabama authorization of demolition of unsecured structures at the listed locations.
All right, anyone in order to need to speak with the council on those four items as for demolition? All right, all right, need a motion to suspend the rules?
Mr. President, a motion to suspend the rules for the rest of the agenda?
Just to uphold, Mr. President.
Oh, motion to uphold?
Motion to uphold.
All in favor, please raise your hand?
In unanimous.
All right.
Item twelve, resolution requiring authorizing assessing cost of payment of public nuisance is on various lines.
Okay, need a motion to-
Motion to uphold.
All in-
No, you gotta suspend the rules.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Didn't say all, you did not say all, so you need to suspend the rules on-
Need a motion to suspend the rules?
I, I say it all, brother. I say it all on the main.
Motion to suspend the rules, we got it.
On the main, it's motion to-
All, all in favor, please raise your hand?
In unanimous.
All right, motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand?
In unanimous, resolution is adopted.
All right.
Counsel, I do have one set of contingencies that I just got from Counselor Riley, twelve hundred dollars to Guide Right, one thousand dollars to Man Who's, twelve hundred dollars to change, one thousand dollars to King Canvas Gallery, eight hundred dollars to Montgomery Bicycle Club, one thousand to Police League of Montgomery.
All right, anyone else? Mr. Pruitt?
Uh, Mr. Calhoun, I'd like to give, uh, two thousand dollars to the Montgomery Police Athletic League.
Okay.
And the bike ride from Selma to Montgomery, Montgomery Selma, is that the Bicycle Club?
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to give five hundred dollars to the Bicycle Club as well.
Five hundred?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Thanks, counsel. Thanks.
Go ahead.
Ms.- Go ahead, Julie.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Ms. Blalock, I want to do five hundred dollars also to the Bicycle Club, please. Okay.
Ms. Blalock, I'll do five hundred to the Bike Club also.
Thank y'all so much.
All right, anyone else? All right, need a motion for approval?
Motion approved.
All in favor, please raise your hand?
In unanimous.
Ms.-
We need to go back to item eight, the, uh, transportation service-
It's still outside. I'll come back before we go there.
Mr. President, I got a couple of questions when we would get to that point.
All right.
Ready?
Yeah.
Ms. Bev, I was just wondering, we're going, we're, uh, budget's not far around the corner, could we start getting a monthly balance sheet along with our statement? And also a list of our bank accounts and the balances? Could we start getting that monthly?
Hand on closings, um, but you should be getting your balance on all of your funds.
No, 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 I'm, I'm talking about a balance-
Well, I know you said balance sheet, but didn't you say something about a balance of your funds?
No, I'm talking about the city's, list of the bank, city's bank accounts, balances, and a balance statement from the city, a monthly balance statement. Like, you give us a little income statement, a balance statement.
Okay, we can look at the balance sheet, I'm not sure about the balance on the accounts, okay, that I don't have to review.
Okay, second, third, third, go ahead, Andrew. Can we, first meeting of the month, is that when you normally put out that little financial statement?
Uh, depends on how month runs out, like, I would have had it today, but we hadn't closed that yet.
That's fine.
Usually got a second.
Second question, this is kind of a, a, a business license and, and a Stacy question. Stacy, I mentioned earlier about the hotel, they give away free beer, they have a liquor license, but now, they don't technically have a legal business license. If you don't have a legal business license, your liquor license is no good. So, if they give away liquor now, and somebody has a wreck, and they go back and research that, their liquor liability insurance will say, hey, we're not paying because you didn't have a li- liquor license. So, how do we get around that? For all the bars and, and restaurants in town that have alcohol, that hadn't gotten a business license yet? Rodney, ain't that right, remember, we had to have a business license to have a legal ABC liquor license?
So, they haven't renewed their license, is that what you're saying?
No, no, they're, they're, they're in the, they're in the backlog of a business license. So, they haven't renewed their license, they tried to renew their license, but they, it's not-
So, it, so their previous license will stay, will be valid through the end of the deadline?
The twenty-first.
Okay, so they're, they're, okay, so that's the way that's gone, we, we extended the license?
Yes.
Okay, great.
All right.
And if we don't get it done, we'll have to kick it out again, right?
We plan to get it done.
All right, sounds great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President, I see that Bob, Mr. Taylor, and then we're back here.
Mr. Westman? You get it?
Yes.
All right. All right, need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to-
Oh, no, 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 I'm, I'm sorry.
Motion to adopt? This is, do you need to read it out again?
This is new business, so we need to suspend.
Need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand?
In unanimous.
Motion to adopt?
All in favor, please raise your hand?
In unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Good luck with your business, sir, thank you. All right, any other council have anything before we go to our public communication?
Mr. President? Mr. Mitchell? You know, always have something.
Oh, geez.
So, I, I had a resolution that I was gonna present to the council today, but I will not, um, present that resolution. That resolution talked about a occupational, um, communal, um, tax we did in twenty-twenty, um, the council voted on it. I wanted to bring it back up, so we could have something to go in front of the legislator about, and that commuter tax talked about helping Jackson Hospital. So, we are gonna, um, reword that, that commuter tax, um, that it, that it focus on healthcare and public safety, so I have that, uh, resolution in front of the city council on the next city council meeting.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. President, I did, um, I know that, um, some of the public didn't watch the work session, but, um, it was brung up, uh, since Counsel Mitchell brung up the Jackson Hospital deal, and so it won't look like we're overlooking that, um, that we didn't help them type of deal, so I just wanted to state that we, I thank the council for everything that we did to assist, and try to just stay with Jackson Hospital with what they were going through. Um, we did have a, throughout that, the state legislator did answer our call and action to come to the plate and assist us. They, um, I don't know if their press release hit the public yet, but they did state that they will work on in closing the insurance gap to assist us in preventing this from happening in the future. Uh, but that, that, I just wanted to say that publicly to the public that weren't able to watch the work session or just didn't know what was happening with the Jackson Hospital situation.
All right, thank you. All right, in our public communication non agenda items, we have Antonio.